Probably in a room safe for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Rosa, all right. Good afternoon. We've asked you here for what we call it's an interview, obviously, in regards to our police station. As some of you are aware, I'm sure you all are aware, that we had a bond issue pass for the very first time, first vote, and the bond issue passed with a lot of hard work from a lot of different people. And, but I think also the taxpayers realize that we're in a position that we have employees, being our police department, that are in a building that's unsafe, that's a liability, and we're just, we're on borrowed time for lawsuits or whatever, and it has become kind of embarrassing. I find it a little embarrassing. So that's why we work so hard as a group of taxpayers, work very hard to get it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it was.
The number of the high school was eight years, I think.
And, yeah, there was a lot. There was a lot. Obviously, the bond issue that passed was three point five million. We added some money to that, not because we weren't in our, well, I was convinced, I'm not sure if these guys should speak for myself. I was convinced it would pass, but obviously, knowing the past history, we added some extra just thinking that we'd have to do this again, all right? So obviously, we, we need a police station desperately, but we're going to be very conscious of the price tag. And some of you, obviously, if you live in town, you know how Belmont is, and you know what your taxes are, and we're pretty adamant about keeping those under control. I have a few questions. I have a kind of a list of questions that, that we'll go down through and we'll.
Why don't they introduce themselves?
Oh, okay.
And would you like them to go ahead with their presentation before you?
Do you wanna, do you wanna do your presentation first?
Yeah, if you'd like.
That's fine, before I do the questions?
Very literally the boss here.
All right. But, oh, you're true, introduce yourselves.
I'm Barry Salter, Bond and pavement Stone Vice President.
Okay.
Keith McBay, Bond and pavement Stone President.
All right.
I'm Bob Ferguson, Supervisor for Bond and pavement Stone.
Awesome, all right, thank you. Why don't you do your presentation first? You can do that now.
Just, just so, and we're talking about an hour, right?
Oh, whatever.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try and go at a brisk pace, so you don't have to be here all afternoon. Please feel free to stop, or if there's, what I'm hoping is that I'm.
You're gonna answer some of these questions, bro.
If you see something that's in the same vein, Barry and I have most of this memorized, but our place in it is the one we need a little help with, and that's why the screen is here. So feel free to jump in and.
I'm gonna generate questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, okay.
So I guess we'll get started here. So thank you so much for having us. We've been watching your project. Obviously, right next door to Belmont, this is, this feels like home down here, so it's a, it's a big deal for us to be here, and we really appreciate you guys thinking of us. I was so happy to see the email from Gene, and we are happy to be here. Touch my screen. So, Gary, I'm gonna try and keep six feet away from you. I'm gonna do the stand-up thing just because I feel about it. So this is our ethos here, is that we're driven to make construction fun and fulfilling for our building partners. Through an unmatched flow of information, we build confidence and solidify expectations. Barry's gonna talk to you a little bit about some of the technology we use to bring that all together, and then we'll probably get into what your questions, kind of boots on the ground, how he approaches the project. So I, my first part is just to talk about some of, some of the tactics or some of the systems we have in place to, to make that construction fun. Then this, last year was our 50th year, so we've been doing this a long time. A brief list of the Colonia Fire, Hopkinton Fire, Bridgewater Safety was a while back, Wilton Police, Center Harbor Police was one Barry worked on. So we enjoy this municipal type work, and we, we enjoy police and fire, it's, it's a fun, sorry, over that.
That's all right.
It's a fun kind of business to be in, because we do a lot of schools, but to have a PB or a fire or a specific needs of that is great. I think a tendency to say is, hey, we've got a lot of experience in police and fire. I would back up and say that our approach is what has made us successful. That every community has a little different need and a little different twist on how they want to deal with their police work. Now, obviously, there's, there's restrictions and requirements in that, but, but every community is a little different. I take, I'm proud that we kind of approached that with a, with an under, developing an understanding of your community and your program, and are able to custom deliver exactly what you're looking for. So we kind of break it down here into, into these three, three areas. So first one is, is confidence, and how do we build your confidence working through that initially? It's like I said, come in, get those initial meetings under a belt, and understand exactly what you're looking for. Understand how, how you came up with your budget, understand what your scope is, develop a, a list of your needs, and then also a list of your wants moving through that. From there, it, it falls on estimating. I, I do the lion's share of the estimating, so that pre-construction effort, I, I enjoy that, and I understand that you mean accurate numbers as we work through design, so that you're making good decisions for your community. So we're committed to that, to providing that accuracy. Timing response, this is, this might be Barry's pet peeve, is that you guys have all done, you've all done some building in, in and around, and you know the curse of construction is that term two weeks. When, when's the roof gone on two weeks? You won't hear that from Barry or Bob, we will be at you with a specific date. We run a tight shift and a tight schedule to be sure that we're not slipping. So there is no amateur, when I hear other builders talk about two weeks, what that really means is I'm not gonna do anything for a week, and then I know I'll meet you in two weeks, so I'm gonna work those last few days and have an answer for you then. That's not our case. You're gonna hear that from us within 24 hours with a real date, or right there dying with, with Barry trusting about that. Cleanliness is just building that confidence, and, and I think walking on a, on a site that's clean is a safe site. And I think it builds a lot of, when you, when the site is spotless, you know you're getting a high quality job, and that's, that's key for us. Next one is this fix-it-now mentality speaks to Bob. Bob came up through the trades, has an eye for detail, and, and, and this fix-it-now mentality is, is if a subcontractor's doing something wrong, it's fixed immediately, so that it isn't, and I look at like your experience when you're touring your site. The chief comes on, he's walking through, and there's say, something as simple as a frayed carpet or a cracked outlet. If you see one of those things, probably can forgive it. You start seeing a few, you eat that, we worry about that anxiety building up, and people not feeling that confidence that, hey, these guys are doing a great job for us. That's where Bob comes in, those boots on the ground, that eye for detail, and the fix-it mentality. And then lastly on confidence is, are these monthly reports. So once a month, well, Barry, you wanna talk about this a little bit?
No, go ahead, you're on a roll.
Uh-huh, okay.
You're on a roll.
So Barry would be your project manager, and his, his job once a month is to give you a snapshot of your project. And the idea here is that everybody works for somebody, so that if you guys are going to a meeting, whoever's answering for this project, or there's the chief or whomever, that they can come to a meeting and add a snapshot. By the way, we're happy to come to all those meetings. And this is broken down into critical issues. One I can think of being a new answer is, here we are heading into winter, what do we do with winter conditions? And just so that we're keeping those discussions open and talking about them, Barry will also summarize the GMP, the schedule, any financial changes, project allowances, if there's any contingency report, and some photography to kind of historically solidify the habit. This is something we were forced to do probably 10 years ago. We met an owner rep that insisted on this, and I told him I, I hated doing it until I found how useful it was. Owners love this because it gives you that monthly confidence that everything's coming together nicely. Did I forget Gene?
It's okay.
Chief gave yours up.
I gave mine up for the chief.
Oh. Sorry. All right, so creativity. This is part of how to hold together and, and have a good time doing it and enjoy the experiences, that we are builders. We know how to approach a project. We're not folks that you're gonna see in the, in the job trail up, will be boots on the ground, out making sure that your project is happening. We love building buildings, we love building police stations, and this is just part of, part of what we do. It isn't a paperwork job as much, even though we're good at that. It is how to put quality building, building's gonna serve a community for 100 years, you know? Opportunities and solutions has to do with just being, being wise about issues as they come. It is construction as, as items as much, it's being nimble and smart about how we approach it. Keep our mind, that, keep our mind around that this is public money, that there isn't an endless pot to go to, and that we need to be really smart about saving dollars all through the process. Early closeout punchless dragging on our great way to ruin a relationship and fail out of the project. We'll start that immediately. Barry will talk a bit about his web-based system for monitoring punchless, but it starts, it starts as soon as dirtwork happens. And we'll, we'll be keeping track of that so that the items that furloughed drag on to the end of your project. And I'm complicated. I had a nice owner tell us that we were good at that one day, and I thought it should be on here. I think construction, and you guys are familiar with it, so you understand the terms, but I think listening to a construction meeting can sometimes feel a little bit like a police meeting. It's a lot of acronyms and, and a language specific to it. And I think we're good at understanding that and making sure that, that we're speaking plainly and meaning what we say and keeping our promises for that. And then finally wishlist. You mentioned you added some money, and I know usually there's a list of, hey, wouldn't it be great if I used? We like to identify those upfront if we can, make them allowances or alternates to the project, so that at the right time through the process, if we're saving money and being smart, that you can add those in if you want to. So we, we like to identify those to you, we're gonna return 100% of the savings to you. We tend to return that money earlier than anyone else, because we'll identify, are there any wish lists items somewhere? That's a hundred. What's a good one?
He's always got a wishlist, okay?
No, actually, you know, as far as the wishlist side, I mean, we haven't actually gotten to the point where we designed this building. So until we get to that point, then you can start developing the wishlist portion of it. I mean, right now I've got a very unsafe building for my employees. I have a building that's too small, I have two detectives in a trailer outside of it.
Gotcha.
So the wishlist is like out here yet. We've gotta get, we've gotta get the design, we've gotta get the understanding of the flaw, because the conceptual that was done was just that. It was, here's 8,000 square feet, we could fit everything in there, but you need to figure out really where and what.
Okay.
So that's, once we get to that point.
Let's, you know, let's say we were working through this, say the building grew a little bit, was a little more than we thought it was gonna be initially. And we had to, we were, we were thinking about these really great lockers for the guys, and, you know, those are $1,200 apiece, they're $500 apiece. You know what, you might say, I can forego that for a little bit, let's, let's set those aside, carry for a, for a reasonable price locker that'll work with a bench. But hold up, now Barry will say, hey, we wanna upgrade those lockers, we'll set that aside, and, and rather than waiting to the end of the project, say 50% complete, we, we buy off some good things on your project. It looks good, we come to you guys and say, hey, we, we're looking great, would you like to upgrade to those lockers you were interested in? And, and a, and a pretty little more secure locker, a little safer locker.
And the reason we like that wishlist early is if we know that wishlist, put it out there when it's competitively bid. And not change orders.
Yep.
Change orders are expensive. But if you have it at the bit, at the time when you're having folks competitively bid, and they're often, hey, we might wanna upgrade to these lockers, they're competitively pricing it, so we hold that number competitively aside for maybe upgrading later on, being responsible with these cash dollars. Yeah, it's funny that you bring up lockers, because the lockers they're using right now are eight inches wide. Every bed of their clothing, including their boots, having it strewn all over this building.
Yep, yep.
It's, it's quite lucky. You can fit one jacket and shirt, and that's it. I mean, you can't hang your gun belt, you can't put anything in there, it's, it's a disaster. To the point where if we had someone go on the lam inside the building and they hit, just go running into the locker room, there's probably a 90% chance they're gonna harm themselves.
Yeah. So. And that nice locker gives you the boots down below.
Right, gives you, but if you walked in here now, you, you would think you were just walking in a small. There's, there's just nowhere to put anything. And the patrol room itself, all the coats, all the gadgets, everything, the chair, and that's, the gear is a stuff on that.
Oh, yeah.
So the 20% locker, because that's a big, that's a big deal.
Yep. And I'm sorry we didn't tour before, just with COVID, I, our protocol is, if you get invited to an interview, you go tour the job. And you're gonna not worry about these days about more strange guys wanting to.
You put a bag over it.
Sit down. And with that, I hand it up to my friend Barry, who's gonna talk about teamwork.
Teamwork. All right. So we believe this is a lot more than a tour. We think it's very important to involve all people involved in the project, not only yourselves, but our subcontractors, our suppliers. They need to feel part of the project, that they're not just hired to do a job and they're thrown away out of it. If they feel like they're part of the project, they come to the project excited, and they buy that, they're gonna do a good job. And they're gonna give us a lot of positive input, they're gonna be thinking about the project rather than being on a project they're not interested in, don't feel like a team member, and then they can't wait to get to another project. And we don't create that environment. And the way, one of the ways we do that is Keith talked about a little bit is a web-based project management system. We use a system called ProForm, which we were the first ones in the state in Hampshire to utilize it 10 years ago. People starting to come on board with it. And what it is, is all you need is web access. Smartphone, laptop, tablet, anything, you have access to every part of this project. You can be involved with this project and never step foot on it, because it has everything of the project in that web-based system. There's an app for it, it's really simple to use. Talk about it a little more. Coordination meetings, we like to do weekly owners' meetings. I think it's important to keep the design team, yourselves, and everyone on the same page, thinking about what's coming up. But before those meetings, usually an hour before, we have a coordination meeting with any subcontractor that's currently working onsite. We're allowed to come onsite. Very important for these people, that's creating a teamwork environment, where they can be heard, they can ask questions. We can go to the meeting afterward, the owners and the architects and engineers that are involved. Ask the questions that they might have about a drawing or a specification. Sometimes give it the answer right there, kind of money, helps us move through quickly. Or at least if they don't have the answer, they're taking it back to their office with them, they're thinking about it. So we find those work really well. Spirit of value, teamwork creates a spirit of value. We're hiring experts in the field. None of us pretend to be an expert in plumbing, structural, steel, or electrical, but we're hiring those experts after the design is done. And their report is important, and if they feel that their report, their input is taken seriously, and then it has meaning. They will, they will say, hey, you know what, we did this on a previous project, or we saw this project. Would you consider utilizing? We can bring back that to yourselves and the design team and say, hey, ever seen this project? It's a way of saving money or time, would you consider it? Partnership, I've really spoken about that partnership. So let's talk about the web-based project management system. We start with a very detailed schedule. That schedule, unlike schedules that you've probably seen before, they look at, go, oh, that's nice, and it goes in the drawer. We live by this. It's updated, it's constantly monitored. The worst thing that you can do is realize that you're behind schedule, and generally when that happens, if you don't really use the schedule, because you're behind schedule, you realize it too late, and there's not enough overtime, which is spending your money, or Saturdays and Sundays to meet a deadline. So you realize that you're missing time at the site or at the concrete, and you stop inputting in effect to make a change, to get this job back on track early on, it's extremely important. What this web-based project management system does is it ties in yourselves, suppliers, the subcontractors. Generally, there's a little thing up here for architect or engineers. As I said, it's web-based, a lot of mundane processes are automated with email, by that I mean, if there's a notification that goes out, people need to pay attention to a deadline, an email reminder goes out and says, hey, you're responsible for this, show up at the next meeting for Barry to talk about it. When you log in, this is your home screen or dashboard, this is specific to you when you log in. There'll be items down here that say my own items, chief might be responsible for, maybe a color, people waiting on this color selection. You come to the meeting, you look at that, and you're walking in, go, wow, that's right, you need to pick your color skin up. Doesn't drag to the next week, we all talk about it. Same with the engineers and the architects, it lets them know that they have some mittles that they do, are you, are folks familiar with mittles? So when the engineer or the architect designs something, spends a lot of time on it, he, he puts it in a specification, it's what's supposed to be brought up in the project. We make our subcontractors, put together a packet on that item, submit. The architect approves it, goes back to him, goes to Bob in the field, he has that information. He makes sure it's what was spec, it's what actually shows up on the job. It balances the checks to make sure you folks get any paper. When you log in, there's many different screens, but there's a daily log, Bob will do a daily log, you'll see everything that happened on that job that day, what was done for work, who was there, who showed up for work. Schedule, I talked about documents. All the project documentations are on this side, specifications, the drawings, not only the drawings, but the current drawings. Drawings get re-vouched, and there's nothing worse than finding a subcontractor that's working on an updated drawing. This prevents that. A lot of the subs will be walking around, they're still utilizing their iPads, their phones, they'll be looking at drawings. You cannot look for or, or, it's a great benefit. Meeting minutes are on there, our coordination and owners' meeting, will be in January every week. There'll also be the minute, the meeting minutes following up. Punchless, Keith spoke up, but we do start that early. We don't wait to fix, solve, or fix problems or frame problems at the end of the job, an anticipated list pile up. Let's address it when they happen, when they notify. Systems automated, they take a photo of it and say, hey, this is incorrect. Sends them an email, says you have three days, a week, two weeks, whatever it is to fix it, they don't fix it. It's downtime, they will like crazy, they fix it, they won't, they get sick of the emails at work. Summittals I already spoke of. So benefits, all the project information is once under the location, everything. So like I said, you can miss a job meeting, we'll look at it, I'm sure at nighttime you're gonna wanna look at the job and see what's coming up. You can see all that. Accountability, this is, this is what it is, it's all, we're all held accountable by this system to meet our deadlines, to get our items of work done, to meet schedule, keeps the project on track, meets the schedule, helps with dollars. It also increases all bidding and project advertising. We have a database of five, six hundred people, bid, I'll give a bid on that, but it gets out to them. The specifications and plans are available for them to download for free. You can look at it, see if they're interested in submitting a bid. Keith, we're seeing a great improvement in bid activity.
At least 50%, especially after the drop in 2008. A lot of subcontractors went out and bought wide-format printers, because they, a subcontractor bids a lot, like we may do five to 10 major jobs a year, where a subcontractor might do 100. So by purchasing plans is, is a huge burden on their pocketbooks. So they went out and bought wide-format printers. Now, when we take your job and we put out the bid, they have your plans, your specifications for free. So it makes, it makes your job more attractive than say a project, they've gotta go either pick up plans or buy plans or like that. So it has, it has really increased activity.
Quite honestly, their timing probably couldn't be better, but if you put a new job on the street. Let, let's be honest, it's one of the probably good points of all that's going on. We, we have people calling us up saying, what's coming up? They, they, they need work, and it makes a more competitive price.
Well, and so many projects have been put on hold.
Yes.
For many reasons, you know, there's a lot.
It's good, I mean, when people are looking for work, their numbers improve.
Yep.
It's just back to the, uh, this system right here allows us to do a lot more with a lot less overhead. There's no assistant project managers, I'll be the project manager, I don't have an assistant, not paying for unnecessary overhead, or a whole huge office staff. Our office consists of six. And this allows us to do it because these works are very, these projects now are very paper-driven, and this streamlines, it helps us with the, the paper documentation. It allows us to free up, to get back to delivering great buildings, not work, not working on the paperwork, which can be a real drag. At the end of the project, you give a disc, helping now a thumb drive. All of, all the project documentations that's on this here, O and M manuals, your as-built drawings, we'll give you paper ones obviously, but this can be unfiled. It's PDF, it's Word searchable, so if you have a problem with a rooftop unit, type in rooftop unit, and anything that has to do with that, from the smittle, the warranty, the shop drawings, the manuals on it, if it comes up, it's easy to access, it's easy to find. That's it for me. Any questions about that?
Do you, um, do you typically, you know, let's just say the, the job got done, I don't know, September 15th, just a number. Are you warranting for a year?
Yeah, we're gonna.
What's your? Oh, on too soon, sorry.
Let's do it, let's, let's.
All right.
We've got a cute little thing at the end of this.
Okay. Well, no, you can wait, it's all right.
No, it's okay, I, I asked you to interrupt, and I don't wanna.
Well, well, it was just because what he was saying came to my mind.
I, I truly believe that buildings are much more, well, I don't believe, I know buildings are much more complicated now than they were, say, 20 years ago. Just, or 30 years ago. In, in a career, I can't imagine that building technology has moved as much as it has since we first came out of the cave, as it has in this last 30, 40 years. And I think it takes a little more time to get you, get to know your building, and I think that it's nice for your builder to hang around a little bit more on it. So I would, I would suggest a two-year warranty on that. I think it's a good way to approach it, and, and if you think of the one year, you know, there's.
It goes by fast.
It does.
And we know that as we get older.
And people are busy.
Yes.
And it tends to be, oh, well, I got busy, I, that's, I hear it all the time. There, there are people out of warranty, and they say, well, I meant to call you, but I just got busy, you know? So we've kind of folded in, as part of that enjoyable experience is, is that, mostly because I've seen it. You, you get together with people, you have a great job, enjoy the hell out of the meetings, and then, and then the project's done. And I've had people that I've run into say, yeah, that, that rooftop unit has been trouble. Well, Bob, why didn't you call me? Well, he didn't wanna bother you. You know, it's like, it's not a bother. This is, this is what we do. So what we've done is we've kind of folded in some ways, Ruth, to be sure that we're visiting these sites, and that we're, we're taking the time to set up a meeting, walk the building, and just on a six-month interval after that for two years, to make sure that, that we're having those conversations, and that people are, because if you make it through two years, it's like a car. Ha ha, it's like a car, you're gonna be okay, you're gonna be okay.
Yeah.
Right? And if, if it's that first year, once you get it straightened out, it, it's, you're gonna be fine with it.
You know, it happens, it's even sad, or sometimes you're about a warranty for a electric heater. So a rooftop unit goes on the second year, so these folks want to replace the rooftop. And what they don't know, and why would you unless you go into the manuals that you are given, and most of that equipment is a five-year warranty.
And that's, that, and that, that's where I was going with this, right?
The labor you might have to pay for, but the unit is warranty.
Right.
And it's like, it's a shame to see people replace. So, the labor you might have to pay for, but the unit is warranty, and it's like, it's a shame to see people replace that because they wouldn't help solve it, that's why.
Well, and the nice thing is, if you have that warranty, is the fact that, you know, Jean can call a company, say, the roof, the, the unit on the roof, and, you know, she's gonna talk to somebody, all right, and I'm not saying she can't solve it, but it's just, she's starting from, okay, where if you were to call, they're gonna say, well, we wanna still do business with them, we want them to still sell our product and stuff, then you get, it's, that's what I, that's where I'm going with this.
We keep my pressure on some things, too, it's not a miracle, once in a while, it's like, you guys, we got thirty days left for warranty.
Yeah. No. Yeah. And it's not that, obviously, we understand some things, the warranty might run out, but the other problem is just nowadays, sometimes it's just trying to get somebody there to look at it. Okay, and you might know someone that says, you know, this company will warranty this person's work, which we're not gonna know.
And I, and I think about mechanical, if you.
Yeah, that's.
And, and, and we've got them in your building for about two years, you might decide, hey, I, I really like these folks.
Yeah. Right.
Let's, let's do a maintenance contract, these guys, take care of our building.
Of course, keep. Yeah. Well, and one thing leads to another, leads to another, obviously, because we have more than one building.
Yeah, and then the, uh, the bidding, that's something we hadn't talked about, is, is a focus on local, no matter where we're going, we're always interested in involving taxpayers best we can as, as bidders, so, uh, we'll come to you with, uh, with bid results. First ask you if there's anyone that you have in your buildings that you like, and of course involve those folks. Secondly, quietly, is there anyone you don't like? And, and be sure that we're putting together that team, so, so Barry and I will come to you with what we call a bid recommendation form and a bid analysis form. So say electrical, here's your five bidders on electrical, and here's, here are the results, and then we'll do a bid recommendation on the top of that, says, hey, we recommend A B C Electrical, maybe they were low, maybe they weren't, but we've checked their manpower, their financial security, their ability to hit the schedule, their workload, and just assured that when they land here, they can serve you well, and be a good part of the team. Now, we might come to you guys with that, and it gives you guys a nice opportunity to say, you know what, A B C Electrical did something at town hall that Jean hated. I would, not only that, but X Y Z Electrical is in Belmont. Would you give them a call and talk to them? So that, that's the kind of open dialogue we're looking for, so that you guys are staying in the driver's seat.
Because we're gonna get the slack on the, on the end, you know, obviously.
But also insulated from it, I, I think about, uh, like, Tom Kim, when we did Kim Chevrolet, he has a lot of people buy trucks from him. And he wants them to have an opportunity, he does not wanna get mired down in who's doing what and like that, so as his construction manager, we were able to, to at least give his, his customers a look, and then work through without hurting him.
Sure.
On, he didn't lose a single customer through that process, and, and some of them were like, uh, no, I'm sorry, it's not working out. Um, but it was, you can.
All right, I'll ask my other question, that's very important, especially to John. Obviously, as you're aware, we had a, um, architectural firm that did a feasibility study here in Belmont.
Yeah.
All right, we voted that, it was done, and, um, we got a lot of good information from it. Um, obviously, that's where we've kind of got our preliminary information, all right? Um, that's where, in the back of my head, I've also got the preliminary, what that price tag might be on that particular, you know, and we know that's just a rough, all right? You do not have an in-house architect?
We do not.
Okay, and I guess my question is, is it going to be to, I, I don't like to use cheaper, that kind of sounds, you know, but I think you understand maybe where I'm going with this. Is it to our advantage to use the firm that's already kind of aware of the site or whatever? Or are you going to be able to bring to the table someone that is, um, gonna, obviously, you work with, whatever, and it's going to be less expensive, that's how I'll place that.
Yeah, we, we are, uh, we are at your service, and we have our eyes on delivering high quality and saving dollars. So, if your desire is to go out and look around a little bit for designers, we, we can help with that.
Well, I don't think that, I guess what I'm saying is that, um, do you have someone that you feel would do, would, would work for all of us, both?
Is, is this televised or no?
Yes, it is, yes.
And, and I don't know that they're, I don't think she's, um, she's not asking you to specifically, um, name someone.
No, oh, no, 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 no.
I think what she's asking is, is that we, we've, we've actually kind of had a conversation over the past few days about the possibility of going from what was a schematic drawing and tentative plans to potentially a design build.
Yeah, I gotcha, okay.
So, that's.
Uh, absolutely, design build, um, we've done a bunch. Uh, our approach is a little different than most. I, I like, there are certain things I like about construction management that design build doesn't give you.
Okay.
I feel like the tendency in the industry is to say, okay, I'm in charge of this designer, and, and it has a tendency to put the builder in the driver's seat of your project, and I don't agree with it. I, I like that owner, architect, builder, kind of three-legged stool. When we approach design build, and there are savings associated with going design build, hands down, absolutely, there's savings. But the savings come in the relationship between the builder and the architect, where the builder is, is paying him and able to say, okay, look, that, that's, that's not gonna work, and it can be, we have a job right now that it's just waterproofing. The waterproofing, we, we were going with a standard tried and true product, it just ends up in the spec, that it's a, it, it's ten thousand dollars more than the waterproofing that, that they need. There's no good reason to carry it, other than I found it in a spec, and I'm, I'm gonna carry it, they have no idea cost usually. Not to pick on them, but it's not their job.
Oh, no, that's right, it isn't their job, they, they, right.
So, it tends to let us have a little more input with you, where I, where I would want to assure you guys of something, I would want you to have complete and total access to that architect. Sure, we're paying him, but I would want you to be able to feel totally comfortable calling up and saying, hey, Bob, I need this, 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 we need to get together and talk. I have, would have no problem, I know none of us would with you getting together with that architect without us. It, it would, I would want it to feel like that three-legged team, but have the efficiency, I, I just want it all, I wanna save you money, and I want that efficiency that design build brings to it.
I guess the thing, what makes me a little nervous, obviously, is that, um, timing is everything, all right, how this project moves forward, timing is everything, and, um, you know, you don't wanna start right off the bat, because the architect starts it, and, and right off the bat, find out that we're six months behind because they're not giving us or you, giving us what we need, that's.
That's the other thing, it's talking about, you, you know, you, you seek that architect with the same approach that you seek a plumber. All, all those items we talked about, financial stability, do they have the manpower to take care of this for you? How's their workload, if they can come in, and not only do they have the talent and the, and the experience, but are they, are they ready to hit the ground running for you guys? So that, so that you, you get a really attractive and unfortunate window here, but it would be a shame to see that go by.
Well, and that's what I'm nervous about.
Architect lied to you, and said, no, I got tons of time, and then, and then the design time slides, and this you can.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we, we would be perfectly happy to do that, I would just want to maintain some of the confidence and the communication, so that you guys are having a great time. I'm not a big fan of, of, uh, the situation where you guys show up and you go, I didn't know we were getting those windows.
Yeah.
You know, I want, I want all the Ts crossed, Is dotted, so that when you're coming out to the site, it's just the, the manifestation of, of the good work that went ahead.
Okay, all right.
Even if it's important, the three-legged stool, I really believe it's important, even if one of these is still in hiding, the architect. Where you, where you're assu- assured of the biggest benefit via tax dollars.
Right.
That it isn't being, it's a balance and check system where you folks are getting maximized quality, product quality, and construction quality, and it's not being. Sometimes you can get away from that balance and check in a strict design build project. And, and I don't know how to say it any different, because.
It, it has to be that turning it into a lump sum thing, not re, some of the other things I'd like to keep is returning savings to you, keeping that open book approach.
Mm-hmm.
If you get away from that, it turns into, uh, I don't care if you wanted those windows, Mr. Architect, you're putting these vinyl, the key ones in, you know, that it's fine, it, it, it meets the outline spec. And, and I, I just would wanna see you guys in a power position from start to finish on it.
Okay, all right, okay.
And, and it doesn't hurt time. The C E O method or a design build that keeps those three entities somewhat separate, working towards the same goal, it, it's no more, it's no slower. It actually could be quicker if you get the right team involved to focus on, once again, it's a schedule, and when we send out bids, we, we actually include the project schedule with bid time. Because we don't want people bidding on something, and then come, the famous thing is to show up on the job and say, oh, I didn't realize that was what you wanted me on the job, I can't get there. So they know eyes wide open when they expect to be there, and sometimes it's hiring an architect, these are our deadlines, these are our milestones, you need to hit these dates, we need to be in the ground on this day, whatever you folks pick, and you want to be breaking ground way ahead of winter. Um, to avoid those winter conditions, and all that's achievable right now.
Well, and that was one of my questions, one of our questions, is current, current workload, and, um, you know, I guess, current workload, are you going to be a, if we can get the architect, okay, we still need a building, all right, we still need a design, that's where I get a little nervous, all right?
We can get an architect.
Okay, all right.
There's no doubt about that.
Okay, and.
Actually put some fuel in it.
And put, and put concrete, have steel ordered before winter.
Oh, for sure. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, cross that off.
Yeah, we are in the work building phase. For now, so.
And we know how to, we know how to stage it, um, you can early release concrete design, you can ear- early release structural steel design. Why, the finishes are catching up, you know, you know, what's the rugs look like, or the carpet, or the floor, and that can be catching up, and you can send these packages out early. So that structural steel can be ordered, fabricated, and ready to fly when the concrete's up, and that's, that's that scheduling, that is, that is, that is keeping the schedule accurate, and one of my favorite stories is, you can't be afraid to take a subcontractor to the path that's fallen behind, no, give you an example. We didn't audition down at Upland Village School, and the steel erector was falling behind, and we worked with him to try to get him on track, we kept working with him, and finally it became a conversation. It, it's not, I'm king, you're slave, it's a conversation that you cannot do this to us anymore, I am gonna hire one of your competitors to come in and help with the erection. And we're happy, they understood it, and then we had that erection company on for two weeks, got us back on track, the erector paid for it, it wasn't, I mean, it was a, it was a, this,
Right, right.
He had to take it out of his contract, but if you do it well, handle it professionally and properly, we actually got these people the same contract that I backcharged. We did a Make-A-Wish thing for a young man who needed a, his wish was to have an indoor soccer facility in his basement. In order to pull that off, we needed to kick lolly columns out, put structural steel in, reached out to that same steel company, not three months later, and said, would you be interested in helping out? Donated it, did the steel, did the erection, pulled Make-A-Wish, so you, you can handle it properly, professionally.
Yeah.
Without being.
Without being a tyrant, and that's that team.
Mm-hmm. Fire away.
Okay.
I'm kinda re, I'm crossing out my, I'm crossing out my questions as we're going along.
So at the end of this, what we're looking for is that superior building, financial security, I think, um, it's back, it's back on the hot button here, I've been a couple of years of talking about financial security, and people look at me like, whatever, you know? But, um, the, the issue is, is that people, you guys have been around the building and the subcontractor world, people are in trouble, and lots of times, they don't even know it yet, and our job is to make sure that when you pay us, that your money goes to those subcontractors. So that's where folks like Bob, and, and I always use the, the dirtwork example, because it's, it's the easiest one to get, is our supers will, if, if One, Two, Three Fuel Company has been supplying that dirtworker, and then, all of a sudden, here comes Four, Five, Six Fuel Company, Bob's gonna be on the phone, say, hey, I don't know what happened, different fuel company here today, um, might wanna call One, Two, Three Fuel to make sure they're getting paid. So down to that level, we're watching that, of course, lien waivers and like that, but we wanna address it ahead of it, and stay on top of it, and be sure that people are not, are not hurting us, you, project through it, so we stay on that, with not only with liens for subcontractor, but lien waivers for subs of subs. So we track it right down the line, so every dollar of yours goes to your project, and avoid any nightmare situations, which I, I would venture to guess there'll be a couple of stories towards the end of this year, of folks that just have a hard time, you know? And of, of course, schedule adherence is various things. And then enjoying the experience, and now comes that last part, Ruth, about the warranty. So, this is the part where, um, if you guys were CEOs, I'm looking to close the deal here, if you will. So a two-year warranty on mechanical, I think that's key, filter changes through that, belt adjustments, but also creature comfort adjustments. I think it's important to note that when the design for the building comes out, and it's, it's an individual's office, and it says you should have a hundred and fifty CFM coming through this vent, that sometimes that person is just cold or hot, and just to tweak these systems to make sure that that, that employee is comfortable in that space.
And that too, your warranty is important to go through a couple of seasons.
Well, and that's the other thing, you know, one year, you know, it's.
Two years, you've got to do two cycles, two work cycles, it's important.
Right.
Electrically, that comes to retorque and electrical conductors, and then this twenty-five-year connectivity warranty on CAT six. I know that you're probably gonna tell me, well, I won't be using CAT six in twenty-five years. But the warranty here, what that does is it raises the level of connectivity, so we get certified connectivity for your building, so it's not, oh my god, I'm down again. This port isn't working, or I thought that, this is labeled in the panel as that port, it's not, so what, what you end up with is a, is a really nice system for internet connection. Of course, coordinating any of your vendors, whether it's furniture, maybe some security, IT, phone, intercoms, all of that, working with them, or taking over as much as that as you need us to. My favorite is door hardware, oh my god, door hardware is, and this is where we get to come in, this is what I like, is to be able to email the chief and say, hey, you've had your building for six months, is it okay to pop in with, maybe it's Bob, and, no, it would be Bob, why wouldn't it be, right?
You always have.
Bob.
You always have doors that have to be adjusted.
And work through those, the, these are the things that people don't call me on, and I go, finally, something happens, or, or they wanna, want me to look at another job. And I'll go there, and the, the, the door hardware is so bad out of adjustment, the closer's just slamming shut, and it's like, why is this happening to you? So, we're happy to adjust that every six months, we're also happy to, um, if, if you have an employee of the town that's interested in that kind of stuff, to kind of involve them in some of that effort for the day-to-day stuff, if you'd like. And I think that was the last one, but when I was out talking, looking at Bob's canoe, I was thinking more on it too, and I think, um, this is like our hometown.
Now he's getting, now he's gonna.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for it.
Now, yeah, now he's sounding like a cop, okay, you go ahead.
I, I.
I don't want to.
I'm a big fan of leaving everything on the table. And I think, uh, it's easy to say this is our hometown, we're gonna take the carrier and all that, but sometimes, I, I don't know, there are words that I mean, but.
You're on tape, remember.
What do they mean to you? You know?
You're on tape.
I think, uh, I think I'd also would like to throw in a holiday on any change orders. So if you have, if you have, uh, a change, we won't put any overhead and profit on a change for the project, do that. All those changes free of charge from our end, cost, charge you for cost only, and no overhead and profit, so hopefully that adds a little bit to it.
I don't really think I have any questions. I think basically, all the questions have been pretty much covered, so you blew my-
Well, I didn't mean to.
No, that's all right, no, that's fine. I, yeah, there you go, John, any questions, please?
Not while we're on television.
Okay, and Sonny?
No, I think I'm pretty good with the presentation, it's quite, quite, uh, quite nice, thank you.
Appreciate you coming over.
I think it's, um, and it is a project in town that's gonna be watched, obviously, I mean, it's right in town.
We don't need an engineer, we got fifty-six hundred of them when you said this.
We got more sidewalk enge- sidewalk engineers than we got.
Well, and, and I'd like to mention that, because we, we have, oftentimes, we'll land in a hotspot with a hot item, and, and we might, if it's, if it becomes an issue, and, and you have that many people that wanna know, we've done, we've done Joe Gay talks-
Little meetings, of course.
Come down on, I had one in Summersworth, I'd go to Summersworth, uh, I think twice a month on a Tuesday, and this was particularly the neighbors who'd come out, and they'd talk about what's going on, and, and little things like, uh, like the exterior of the building, the block went up, and then we had a, a air barrier on the block that was yellow. The brick hasn't gone on yet, so, and the people there, they're in the neighborhood, like, you're giving us some yellows. More yellow than that, just right yellow.
Sure.
It's like, no, we're not giving you this brick to go up there, but it, you know, I, I joke around about that, but these people were-
Sure, oh, yeah, well, they didn't, of course.
And left there feeling like, all right, somebody heard my voice, and every once in a while, an issue would come up and say, well, you, you should go to, go downtown and talk to the administrator rather than me. But general, uh, construction-related, schedule-related-
And obviously, it's a tight site.
It is.
You know, it's going to- Yeah, it's going to be, um-
Well, and this is a, this is a construction town. And when you say you've got that many engineers, you're not kidding, it's a construction town.
Yeah.
Everybody's an expert.
And every, there's a whole lot of construction folk down here. I mean, I was just thinking about it, we've got, I, I don't, we had at least, no, you're the third, three owners of our company from Belmont. It's, it's, and then ma- when we ran the masonry, tons of masonry down here, it was crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so when closing, you know what your foreman would be, when I was talking with him?
And that was, obviously, that was, uh, not knowing how many foremen you have, obviously, um, that was huge for us.
We thought it was huge. How could we get Bob driving to our job?
Can you imagine? Imagine if Bob has to get up in the morning and drive out, and I'm like, sorry, I bet to Jimmy.
No.
Man, you know, personally, I share enough to be proud of it, I was thinking about it, I can't believe I've done this down fifty-eight years. Wow. But I certainly, you know, y'all like to pay back, and, and in your own way, you folks do it by donating your time. That's not my cup of tea, I'd love to select parts or cheaper places. But sure, it'd be nice to watch the tax dollars pay back a little bit to the towns and make them, you know, pay back. I think that'd be great.
Wow, that's a lot from you. I mean, that must've broken out Barry ever.
Awesome, all right, well, um, we do have ano-
We have one more interview, um, next week.
Next week.
And then I would expect, probably, potentially, that afternoon or that same day, or within the next day or so after that, they will have made a decision, because we really do need to, um-
We, we're not, we want this happening, I mean, we understand it's not good times, all right? But, um, uh, we also understand that we have a department that's-
In dire-
In dire need, okay? And, um, uh, and I would imagine, I mean, I don't know that, have you looked at the bond lately?
I actually just made a note for myself to, um, send out bond acquiries and, um-
A note to do that, I mean, I'm hoping that, that it's, might even, I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, it might be even a little less than what we knew when we gave information.
We were hearing, we're working in Huckington right now, we're here in one percent.
That would be really nice.
One point two five, it'd be awesome.
Really?
So, and, I mean, that's-
Yeah.
Free.
Right, I mean, that would be huge, right? And again, I think timing is excellent, because there are, there's a lot of guys out there that became carpenters, and how that is, you know, years, but they're not working, or they're, they realize it's not fun being on your own, and I think that that whole industry's gonna be changing again. But I think its reality has set in, and, um, I think this is perfect timing for it, I think we could get-
And we lucked out last fall, I don't know how, but we ended up with, with five or six new guys, young guys, with licenses.
Yeah.
And they, I hear people talking about these two kinds of millennials.
Yeah.
And they are all, whatever kind it is, it works hard and it goes crazy, I love it.
Yeah. Yeah, I've heard that from a couple other construction people that have, you know, last year, or a year or so ago, it was just brutal.
Yeah.
All right? And it's changing, and for the better, okay, that's for sure. I don't know what's gonna happen to that other group, but I guess, um, as long as that positive group comes forward, and wants to work.
That's the other thing, if you wanna work.
Yeah, huge, well, maybe they've seen-
Yeah.
The light.
I like it.
Yeah, that's exactly right, we all do, that's for sure. All right, no other questions then?
One, I'm not sure what your schedule is for how you need to get out of the building, we're spending a couple of-
Well, I, I mean, obviously, we have a little bit of, um, we have, um, a little bit more to do upstairs on the fourth floor.
Right, we need to, um, finish off the fourth floor as far as getting it set for meeting space. We did get the, um, structural issues that we had with the fourth floor fixed, um, last year. Local contractor came in and fixed the, so we're, we're good to go, we do have to put flooring down, we gotta fix bathrooms up there, um, and then we need to renovate on the first floor, um, office space for the general assistance office to get out of the basement, and those are really the things that we gotta focus on.
And that's not a huge thing, it's basically, you know, the door's there, it's, it's pretty, it's, it's walls, flooring, you know? I mean, it's not, yeah, yeah.
From that standpoint, where are they?
I mean, that, that's, you know, that's not a big thing, but it's something we have to do. We do have someone coming to look, because this is a tin ceiling.
Right.
And we've had some interest from our-
That is really good shape.
Yes, and we've had some interests, obviously, from our, um, what am I-
Heritage.
Heritage, thank you, thank you, I'm brain cramped. And so, and we know that a tin ceiling, it's gotta, you know, you just don't go up and rip and tear, you gotta, yeah, so, even, even, this is all tin.
We're restoring that colonial right now, we're just very careful.
Yeah. Yes, so, that's, and those are really the only, they're not big items, but then it's, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
If, uh, after this, any questions, please call or ask.
Yeah, we'll call you.
Very, very much, and the rest of them would hate to miss it based on the unclear ones.
Yeah. All right, okay, all right, great. I, um-
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interviews are not easy.
Interviews are not fun, no, and, and actually, we kinda held off because, um, we wanted to do it this way. This, sitting here with a computer is just, that's not my, yeah, I am so tired of those, I'm not tired of them, they're just, you know, they're okay to exercise with, but they're not to do meetings and-
They are okay to exercise as well.
Yeah, yeah, they are. Um, actually, we have a lady that, um, works, does it right here at the mill when we're-
Oh, okay.
Right, and, and so she's just set up, we're, we're continuing as a group.
That's great.
Belmont, the girls, we're just, we are continuing as a group, moving forward.